I'm going to call this meeting to order. We're going to start with a roll call attendance.
Paul Kaufman.
Here.
Maria Davies.
Here.
Susan Edmondson.
Here.
Ruth Johnson.
Aye.
Kim York.
Here.
Kim Bailey.
Here.
Ryan Westcothe is absent.
Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So our mission statement is preparing each student for a successful and meaningful life. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously and we are on recognitions.
All right. Mr. Kaufman, if you'll join me.
We are very excited this evening to recognize some of our fine student athletes. They spend a lot of time and dedication to their sport as well as their academic work. And they have been very successful and we're glad to recognize them. And that is our girls' cross-country program. Both teams, boys and girls, qualified for the state championship meet this year. And our girls had the recognition of finishing second place, which is exceptional. Some of these same ladies were on the team two years ago that got second place. And many of them are also team members from last year that got seventh after we had some students graduate. And so now they're very distinguished completers of second place again this year. And none of them are seniors. So there's always an opportunity for next year. With cross-country, there's a tremendous amount of dedication and hard work, just as there is with many of our activities. But most of us know how long-distance running feels and how hard it is to be maintained, being motivated for that. So I really commend them for all their hard work. We had three of the runners finish high enough to be considered all-state. And we'll bring those up one at a time. First, Miranda Dick, fourth place at the state meet. And ladies, we'll just line up here. And next, we have Mackenzie Stucker, who is eighth place at the state meet. And we have Marissa Dick, who is 14th place at the state meet. Also on this team at the state meet, Grayson Kloth. Team member Lorana Mitchell is not here this evening. How about Anna Patterson? Not here this evening. That makes me you Zoe Schreiner, I guess, then. Come on up. If, in case you're not aware, there are seven team members that participate in any meet-level competition. And the top four placers of that team then count towards the team points. So even though it's an individual event, it's also a team event at the same time. Top five, I'm sorry. Top five runners. Congratulations on a great year. Coach Johnson and the coaches have had a great program for a long time. They dedicate a lot of time and effort as well. And I know they're very proud of you as well. So Coach, why don't you come up here and join us in the picture, if you would? We'll book in you on the other end. Great job, ladies. Thank you for all you did. And you are welcome to stay if you'd like, but you don't have to. You can go on if you would like as well. Thank you for being here. There's one other group I want to mention tonight. And we've got them listed in Board docs for recognition. And that's staff members from across the district who have earned an advanced degree this year. We have a total of 20 different staff members on the list. Nine with master's degree, nine with specialist degrees, and two with doctorates, including one Lisa Hatfield, a member of our cabinet team. So congratulations. We'd like to recognize them for their efforts and their dedication to further their preparation and career, as well as help our students with that extra knowledge. And we have some signed notes that we're going to be sending them on behalf of the board. We didn't invite them tonight because we, you know, we value their time as well. And they already put in a lot of time as it is. So let's congratulate them for all that they do.
Moving on to the consent items. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. We are now on public comments. Are there any public comments?
Not tonight.
We are on annual performance report. Dr. Kerry Muntzus.
Yes. Yesterday, DESI issued the annual performance reports for all the school districts in the state of Missouri. And we're very excited to report that once again this year, we earned 98.9% of the possible points. It's the exact same score that we had last year as a district. And you can kind of see at the top of the page of the chart that we've been improving each year as we've been under MSIP V. This is actually the fifth year. The 2013 year is not shown here, but we were at 93% that year. And we worked our way up to where last year we earned 98.9%. And we earned the same amount again this year. The only points we did not receive are in the subgroup achievement area. And again, it's kind of the same amount of points as last year in that regard. Overall, half of the score is based on your student assessment results on our spring tests in grades three through eight, and then our end-of-course exams on select courses at the high school. We do very well overall on those areas. But I'll tell you, it's been hard to make year-to-year comparisons, as we talked about in our work session last week, because the test has been changing, especially in math and ELA the last few years. And this year, the state had to throw out the Algebra I and English II results because of testing issues with the vendor. So even though it's not a complete picture of our academic success, gives us a pretty good idea that we're performing very well. Any patrons that want to know more about our academic achievement can review the information from last week's work session. We went through that in pretty significant detail. The other things, other areas, the other half of our score has to do with college and career readiness, student attendance rates, and graduation rates. And we have been earning all of those points now for at least three years that I'm aware of, if not four. So again, high performance across the district. It's a tribute to our students and our staff to make that happen from year to year. There's some additional supporting information in a document in the Board docs, as well as a listing of metro school districts. Last year, I think we were, had the second highest score in the metro. And this same score was the third highest this year out of all the school districts in the metro. So something to be proud of. And it's nice to recognize and celebrate that on American Education Week. So it was good news for our district. And we're proud of these results. But obviously, there's always room for growth. And at some point, I'd like to get all the points if we could. So we'll keep working in that direction. If there's any questions you'd have, I'd try to answer them now.
Are there any questions or comments? All right. Thank you and the administration, as well as all our staff and teachers, for all of your hard work. John T. Belcher Scholarship Committee.
We need to identify three volunteers from the board to serve on that committee as we select a representative for RAPEC in the MSBA John T. Belcher Scholarship Program.
I would like to do that. Please.
Ruth?
I'm. I'll do it.
Maria? And I'm happy to do that. Or unless... Okay.
I'll do it.
Oh, go ahead.
You're the third?
Go ahead.
Paul, Ruth, and Maria? Okay. Thank you very much. We'll be in touch on the details of that.
All right. We are on action items. Easement to City of Raymore.
So a few years ago, we were approached by the City of Raymore. They were writing at that time an application to get some grant funding to expand their trail system there behind Raymore Elementary Memorial Park. And so that kind of didn't come to fruition. But since that time and the passage of their bond issue and their funds to improve their park's trail system, they've come back to us talking about wanting to expand their trail behind Raymore Elementary School. In the diagram that we've got on the screen, the red line is the expansion area. And the bottom right corner of that is the part that actually goes through the school district property. It's beyond the playground fence by Goodways. And it goes kind of around the two ball field areas you see there, the kind of the teardrop figures in that area. Just to give you a little context there, some years ago, Parks and Rec started using those fields and maintaining those fields because they used them much more than we did. So we have had a shared use kind of process with them for some time. But now that they're going to actually put a hard-surface trail onto our property, they requested a construction easement and a permanent easement for the trail itself. So we're glad to continue a shared project with them on that. And we think we've looked at it from a safety perspective. And we think we're fine there. We've got about a five-foot fence behind the playground, and then there's some distance out to that area. So we think it's a good collaborative effort in that part of our property with them. And again, they use it on a regular basis, probably more so than we do at this point.
Are there any questions or comments?
We own that property with the two?
Well, those two infields you see, the white areas, we own that little square, if you will. You can see the kind of an outlined square around that corner of the property. And that is our property on that part.
Are there any safety concerns during school hours?
I don't think so with the fence. It's a, you know, it's not a low fence. It's, you know, it's at least a chest-high fence. And we have playground monitors out there anytime we would have students out there. So I don't see it as a concern any more than that area is unfenced now. So anybody could walk up in that area now as it is. So I don't think it really elevates that at all.
Do we have cameras out there at all that get that area?
I'm not sure if we do or not.
It just might be a good backup.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
I move to accept the proposed, or to approve the proposed trail easement and temporary construction easement at Raymore Elementary with the City of Raymore.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. We're now on the October 2017 ridership. Dr. Petten Gill.
Hello. DESI, as you probably recall, requires the Board of Education provide proper accounting for pupil transportation and approve a ridership report. The ridership report packet, or the ridership report is in the board packet this month. And Ryan can probably have it up here. The report can be a little bit confusing, so I want to take just a second to kind of break down a few details. For example, the total students column doesn't include special education students because they're accounted for on this report, but not in that column. So that kind of confuses some people. So that's one area. Also, the regular riders, the definition is important to understand. A regular rider is a student that rides at least once per week, one direction. So if they just ride a bus on Tuesday mornings to school, and that's the only day of the week they ride, they're still considered a regular rider. So as long as they ride, in general, once a week, we count them as a regular rider. So some numbers you may see seem high. That doesn't mean that that's the number of students. Actually, the bus drivers keep, have clickers, and they actually count, a head count, every morning and every afternoon. They turn that into Apple Bus Management, who shares a spreadsheet with me. We review that weekly when I meet with their management. That's where you'll see where we, as soon as we find out there's a bus that was overcrowded, or if we have older kids, even though capacity says 71 students, that's assuming three per seat. Even at our middle school level, that gets a little crowded. So we attempt to keep all of them at no more than two per seat. We just added two more first-tier routes last, at the end of October. And we obviously look at that ongoing. And if additional routes are needed, we are glad to add those. I wanted to just take a couple other pieces. The ridership only counts home to school and school to home. It doesn't count any special education, no early childhood special education. Our leap shuttles, our VOTEC buses are not included in that. It's only if they're going to or from school from home. So that also causes some confusion. There's also some anomalies on here where you, there's a really neat or weird coincidence. And I called Apple Bus about it when I saw it. For example, at Creekmore, we have walkers. And then we have students that are eligible to ride if they chose because of a hazard area, which in that case, in both directions, it's due to sidewalks. And the coincidence here is it says there's 78 walkers. And then there's a different 78 students that could ride if they so chose due to a hazard area. And I did check. They said it is a weird coincidence, but it is a coincidence. Those are not the same 78 students. And for clarification, that doesn't mean those 78 students that could ride are riding. Most of them actually are not. But they could. So just wanted to...
If they are riding, they're in the ride column.
They would be included in that ride column if they were riding.
What is a hazard area?
A hazard area could be, like, for example, we don't have, we don't make any students cross Lucy Webb that are in Raymore Elementary or 58 Highway. In Creekmore, if you go over on Creekmore Pond, that little loop there, there's an area due to construction that doesn't have sidewalks. So for them to walk the sidewalk route, it would be over a mile from school. So we allow them, even though they're technically within a mile, we don't make them walk down the road, if at all possible. Same thing with on Creekmore Drive. There's some missing sidewalk components that when you get a bit further east. This year, because of the lack of sidewalks, they're still considered eligible to ride because of the hazard zone. And, you know, we look at age of students. We look at a lot of things when we determine a hazard area. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you have, if I didn't, if I maybe caused more confusion than I solved.
Are there any questions or comments?
Just a quick question. Well, first of all, thanks for the little notes on there. It's helpful. As you scan down into the more details, one of the column headings changes. It says count. It says count and then ride and then no ride. Is count the same as total?
That is the, that is the sum of the ride and the no ride. That's how many, when we did the math on all the stops, that's how many could be riding. Like, for example, that very first one, the Bridle Ridge that rides bus 17, there's 39 students eligible to ride that bus. They have 29 that ride at least once a week, and 10 that haven't ridden, or that are not regular riders.
Got it.
How is our overall rate going compared to students that can ride that don't ride?
This year, it's down a little bit. Last year, we had 70% of eligible riders that rode the bus. This year, we're a little, right under 64% that ride the bus.
We have actually a fewer, fewer kids eligible because when we went to the, an extra neighborhood elementary level, it created more walkers, if you will. Because with the intermediates, we had a lot of kids we had to bus because they covered the entire district. And now with seven elementaries, there's, you know, there's more kids closer to school, if you will. The other thing, you know, Brian had mentioned that some of the counts might be a little high. But you have to remember that not all those kids are riding every day. Some are just riding morning, some are just riding afternoon, some are just riding a couple days a week. And then if you saw, the high school in South Middle had some very small numbers. But you have to remember that those areas are combined now. So our rights, that routes count.
Some of them.
Some high school and some middle school, at least the ones that are in the South Middle School zone. And those also tend to be our more rural routes. So there's going to be smaller numbers on them as well.
So someone's keeping track of if these numbers, let's say that right now 20 are riding, even though there's 30 eligible. If, for some reason, everyone started riding, we're keeping track of?
Every, every day, every morning and every afternoon, I have the head count that rode that bus. And then I have them, I like my spreadsheet. So they're highlighted and they're caught with contingencies on, on if it's over a certain... I have it set up in Excel where it divides the capacity by three and multiplies by two to understand. So we could just put two in a seat, and then it'll flag it if it's more than two per seat. And then the few complaints that I've had in terms of my child's having to ride three to a seat and they're crowded, when I, I actually go out to the elementaries. I try to go to one, or not just the elementaries, but to one of the schools, try to every morning that I don't have a early morning meeting, among several other reasons for being there, is to audit the load counts, to visit with our drivers and administrators and check the walking situation. And we review that all the time.
And that was an extra procedure that Dr. Petten Gill started this year. So the daily load counts.
Thank you.
So on the count here, like, the buses that are combined, like, high school, South Middle School, how are those counted? Because I'm just looking at my, one that my son rides. But it's not listed under the middle school, but it is under the high school. So are they just counting everybody as a high school?
No. Does your son ride, I mean, in that particular case, that bus, does it have middle school students?
Oh, wait a minute. Okay, you do have South and East broke up. Okay.
Yeah. There should be two entries for those.
That specific bus number has a combination.
Yes.
So.
Okay. I thought we combined both middle schools, but, um...
Nope. They'll be separate.
Okay.
Are there any other questions or comments?
Like with some of these that are, like, five students that ride, or is there a way to be more efficient there?
Which school was that at, Paul?
High school, bus number 18 has five.
So that's, that's one of the situations. If you look at bus number 18, if you go to South Middle School, bus number 18, I'm going to assume there's...
Okay, that's a combination.
That's a combination of middle school, South Middle School and high school kids both ride bus 18?
Mm-hmm.
So those are, both of those kids are, quantities are both on there. So that's going to, we don't have any routes with single-digit riders, or we combine them. At Raymore, we had a few that were very small quantities, and then we combined routes. And actually, at the same time, then I added two routes to Peculiar. So we're constantly reevaluating as the right, you know, when fall sports end, especially at the middle school level, all of a sudden, our routes ballooned. Because a lot of those students were staying, you know, after school every day, and then they weren't, so.
Is that generally a very big disruptions to parents on the timing of when they get their bus? When we end up splitting it out?
We communicate a full week in advance at a minimum that changes are coming. Unless, you know, we had a situation this fall where East Middle was overcrowded. And the day we found out, we added a bus that afternoon. But we communicate that.
So another area there, Paul, is that when you're in the south end of the district and it's more rural, we look at ride time as well. So they may have fewer kids on the bus just to keep the ride time manageable. So that's some of the reasons why, especially in the less populated areas, we'd have smaller numbers on the bus.
You'll also see very low numbers on our ELL buses. I have two buses that cover the entire 97 square miles to pick up ELL students. Those, they all go to Timber Creek. Therefore, those numbers are going to be low because they cover so many miles. We don't want those students sitting on a bus for an hour and a half, just...
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you for being so on it all the time.
Is there a motion?
I move to approve the October 2017 student ridership count.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Dr. Petten Gill, we're now on Architectural Services.
Well, hello. The board is specifically aware of the great partnership that we've had with Insight Design through our addition of the high school. They oversaw that project. You've got to see Patrick and Aaron and different members of Insight Design's team come and present on progress. What you may or may not know is we also have had an ongoing contract with them, separate from the big project, as our onsite, sorry, on-call architect. That contract has, is expiring. And reviewing it, we are actually recommending an extension of the current agreement with Insight Design Studio for three additional years under the same terms as the previous agreement. They've agreed to keep the rates as they are for an extension. And we are in support of that.
Any questions or comments?
Yeah, I would just like to say, I think the value that they add in all the going above and beyond and truly trying to think about what's best for our students in our district, that they are well, well worth it, so.
Is there a motion?
I move to approve extending the agreement with Insight Design Studio for three additional years under the same terms as the previous agreement.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Early notification incentive. Dr. Hatfield. Dr. Hatfield.
Good evening. Thank you. If you'll recall, last year, I came to you and asked for you to approve an early notification incentive. We were going through some significant reconfiguration last year. And the goal was that we would know in advance of individuals who weren't planning on returning. We did, you guys did grant that. And we had 12 individuals who let us know before the December deadline that they were not going to return for the upcoming school year, which allowed us to not consider them as we reconfigured. But it also allowed us to, for those that we did need to replace, we were able to get some very quality candidates. And all of the positions that resigned prior to that date, we had them filled by March, which is very significant considering that some of them would be considered very difficult to fill. With that being said, although we don't have a reconfiguration this year, I would like to ask that you consider this incentive again so that we would again have the opportunity to begin posting and recruiting for positions earlier than we normally would if we didn't have something like this. I want to remind you, though, it is not an early retirement incentive. That is something that rewards someone for retiring early. This is simply a notification incentive. If an employee that is paid from our Certified Teacher Salary Schedule would notify us prior to December 22nd that they did not intend to return for the 18, 19 school year, in June, they would be provided a $500 stipend. I believe, based upon past trends, it would have a budget impact of no more than $10,000. Last year, it was $6,000. But we do really believe it was beneficial to have this in place. So I'd like to ask for your approval for that this evening.
One question. Would this be something that we would just want to put into policy so we wouldn't have to renew it every year?
We might. We wanted to, we had a year where we were doing major reconfiguration. So it's almost like that's kind of a sample year. We wanted to do it at least one more year in a non-reconfiguration year, more of a normal year, to see what the response would be to it. But there are many districts who do put this into a regular policy. And we may, we may yet do that. We wanted, that was my, my recommendation to Lisa, that we do a one-more-year trial before we make that decision.
I like that we do this for certified staff. But I would like to also do it for some of our support staff, for all of our support staff, because they work just as hard. Even if we don't do the 500, but something, maybe for them, too.
They absolutely work just as hard. And that's certainly not what this is insinuating. Our certified staff are under contract. So they are bound to that contract for a full year of service. Our support staff are not bound by that. And you could imagine that, and I'm not saying it would happen, but you could have someone say, yes, I'm going to leave. They do leave, but then reapply, or it, it's just a little bit trickier because they're not in a position that requires them to be contracted for a year. There are also positions that are typically easier to fill. And we wouldn't often, like, even if I knew right now that a custodian was retiring or leaving at the end of the next school year, I wouldn't hire for that position this early because it's highly unlikely that someone would accept a position with that much of a gap and not working, if that makes sense. I understand, would certainly like to do it for all, but again, trying to be a good steward of the district's money as well.
There might be another type of incentive we could come up with at some point that would accomplish something similar.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
I move to approve the early resignation retirement notification incentive for the 2017-18 school year.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
We are now on Good Neighbor, Strong Community Initiative. Dr. Al Volker.
Good evening, everyone. Excited to present this again tonight. I know we talked about it at our board work session. This is a great opportunity for our district and really our county. Because what we're trying to do with this initiative is partner with county, districts, and organizations and put on a great event for our community. So what we're trying to do, the Raymore Peculiar School District, Belton School District, the Public School Foundation of Raymore Peculiar, and RAPEC Cares have joined together to put on a symposium, just a day of learning for our community, with the idea that we are just trying to build knowledge and education along many topics that we'll go into in the next slide. You'll see, it's a little easier to understand when you look at our goals. We're trying to create a greater sense of community connection in our area. And when we're talking about our area, we really are talking about our entire county. So that is a really important focus with this. Educate community members on preventative and proactive ways to support families and the community as a whole. Increase awareness in our communities to the growing mental health concerns prevalent in our county. And connect community members to tools and resources along these same lines. So look at our topics that we're going to be discussing these, on this day. Healthy relationship building, building that resilience for children, teens, and families. Bully and suicide prevention. Increasing emotional and social relationship skills. Building that community mindset. And then talking about safety, safety in general in our schools and in our community as a whole. Because all of these things tie together. We understand building the strong communities is in tune and aligned with building strong schools and strong school systems. So when we're talking to families, we're talking to parents, and we're talking to our community, and we're talking to schools, we're all working together towards those same goals. And that's what this, this day is really all about. So I want to highlight some of our speakers. We're really excited about this one. It's our keynote speaker. I know I can't contain it every time I look at this, and I've only talked about this 50 times. So we're leading off with Dayton Moore, General Manager, President of the Kansas City Royals. So we're excited that he's willing to come to our community and talk at RAPEC High School to our entire county. But the building that unity and that team, and teamwork that it takes to work together. And as you can imagine, he's really good at that. So he has a little bit of expertise in that, building unity and teamwork. Then we're going to talk to, have Dr. Chris Haven talk to us. He... He is the President of the American Association of Marriage and Family Therapists. So we're very excited to have him come speak, as well as Kerry Casey. So we have a watchdogs program here in the district, and you'll see Dad's volunteer. He actually works for the organization that founded Watch Dogs. So very great speaker, we're excited to have him come talk to us as well. So when is it? Saturday, February 10th. It's at Raypek High School. We hope to use the entire high school, or a lot of it. We'd like to have a lot of people show up. From nine to three, they're able to come and go as the schedule allows. We're working on providing childcare and lunch for the first 300 that register. But we've got word that if more people show up, we're going to work on providing more lunch. It was really like a lot of people to show up. We're going to start registration in January, and again, hope to have lots of folks come. And we're going to be talking to other school districts, and we're going out into communities, talking to Chamber of Commerce, talking to other governmental organizations. We have a lot of great, as you can see, there are breakout sessions. So we have a lot of people that already have asked to be in those, the Missouri Highway Patrol, different, just political, I mean, government organizations and mental health organizations that have asked to come speak, just to, to provide information to our community. So.
Quick question on that.
Yes.
Are any of these breakouts going to be able to be recorded for others to see that maybe can't make it to that one?
It might be a little hard to record the breakouts because they're going to be in individual classrooms that we're going to have to spread out across. We can try, we could certainly try. Might be a little easier to record the big keynote speaker portions, but the breakouts, we can give that a try. It'll be, it will definitely be more difficult to do that, though. But we can look, because I think it will be something that we'd like people to be able to access. Well, if it goes well, we'd like to replicate it, but just continue to grow that knowledge base in our community. So those breakouts, we've had people that have signed up. Also in the lunch portion, we're going to have poster sessions, if you remember kind of the science fair approach, where you do the trifold, well, there, as you eat and just walk around and talk to people, we'd like people have information about their organizations and how they can support families and our community just there as well. So we're coming to you tonight to talk to you a little bit about funding and ask for your approval to use some district resources. We have some district resources that we've, we believe are allocated and can be allocated, so they are not encumbered resources. We can use them for this, so we'd not be asking for some type of budget adjustment, but we'd like to use current budget funds to be able to help along those lines. I think Dr. Monses could speak to more specifics on the target total, but we're looking in the $10,000 to $15,000 range.
We're requesting up to $15,000, just to make sure. And Belton has likewise committed the same amount as a partner in this, so, and we've got foundation support as needed as well. So we've got a lot of partners at the table. We're not sure we will need $15,000, but we, we were going to ask for your approval for up to $15,000.
Any questions or comments?
I think it's great, it's a community effort, not just one school here, one school there. It's a group effort.
Mm-hmm, really is.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
I move to support the Good Neighbor, Strong Community Initiative in an amount not to exceed $15,000.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Committee reports.
Wellness Committee had our first all-school workout. Dr. Monses, Mr. O'Neal, Mr. Volker all showed up. Mr. Gooding and Mrs. Stidham did not show up.
[laughter]
Along with several of the board members that did not show up.
That was at a parent meeting.
Yeah, there's a lot of, and the excuses that have been given, I mean, vary, you know, but.
I didn't know about it.
Yeah. But we are planning another one for January, and, what's that?
I said, is that one inside?
Yes, that would definitely be inside. But had a lot of positive feedback from the people who did attend, that they were very sore for a few days after, but was wondering when the next one was going to be, so.
It, it was fun, and it was enjoyable to do it with your cohorts, and yes, we were sore, we were not used to the Kaufman family workout routine.
[laughter]
But I told Paul's wife, Amy, that next time I might be in the walking group with her. I was too ashamed to raise my hand when that was suggested, and I'm not going to be ashamed next time.
[laughter]
I'm still sore.
Could we get an invitation for that for our calendar? Thank you. Any other committee reports?
Well, as we all know, the Strategic Planning Committee's still been very, very active in all this going on with it. I'm very thankful for all the community members who came to the public forum and completed the survey. That was a lot of, a lot of help to us.
Yeah, those meetings have been going very well, and it is very exciting, but Ruth kind of covered it, so, thank you.
I also did have a State Board of Education, or Missouri State School Boards Association conference call today, and it had, it was pre-planned months ago, but it just kind of coincidentally worked in with a lot of stuff going on. Of course, the topic of the day was the governor's attempt to take over the State Board of Education by appointing people that he has specifically chosen to vote the way he wants on our Commissioner of Education. They have called for a special meeting on Tuesday, closed session in regards to hiring and firing of personnel. And the fear is they're trying to fire Margie Vandevive, the Commissioner. Most of them have, some of them have never even met her yet of the new appointees. Constitutionally, this is a big issue because the, the function of the State Board is supposed to be very nonpartisan. It's specifically designed that the governor cannot have impact on it. It's supposed to be, you know, equal amounts of Democrats, Republicans, so that it is a nonpartisan group. It is not being that way. Several of these have come in as independents, but they all have links back to the governor. If you look at their backgrounds and their work environments, they all link back to the governor.
Wasn't she just awarded a regional position?
Yes.
Or a national position because of all of her work?
Yes. And I have reached out to, one of the newer appointed ones, Eddie Justice, was at our conference, him and Doug Russell both were, and they both specifically mentioned how they were going to be nonpartisan, and was going to look at things, and they were two of the three that are calling for this special meeting. I did send Mr. Justice a link of our conversations at conference, and our conversation between the two of us ceased at that point, when I was reminding him of what he had said on video. So still a lot of work to be done, you know, because these people are making decisions that theoretically they have not been confirmed and vetted. The Senate in January will come in, vet, they have very intense interviews to make sure they truly are Republican or Democrat. Well, these are independents. So how do you balance that? They can be not approved by the Senate. So then what do we do? They've made decisions that have huge, long-term impacts on over 900,000 kids, and they can be not approved.
What would be your suggestion if someone would want to?
Still to continue to contact the governor's office, and I couldn't get the phone number because Facebook can't come on in here, and, little details. And to contact the State Board of Education through DESI. It's SBE@DESI.mo.gov. It goes to a main email, and then they send it out to all the board members.
And we'll have that email address and your information we send out on Fridays tomorrow.
I, I heard today in, in our conversations that one of them have said they have received over 900 emails before today's emails got put into there. A lot of political maneuvering to it. Luckily, one of the newer appointees is hesitating. But then the fear is, is the governor going to withdraw his nomination and put somebody else in there?
So they haven't even been approved.
They have not been approved. But that is part of the, the statute, the way it's written, because, you know, Senate is only in session a certain amount of time, so until, like, he can appoint people. He is not, I don't think necessarily supposed to appoint and then withdraw that appointment because he doesn't, they're not going to vote the way he wants. And there's been several appointed and then withdrew their own nomination because of the happenings.
Is there something that we can put on the website? We'll be getting that information in the update. Is there something we can be putting somewhere on the website for our general public who might want to?
We'll try to work something out for that.
They have the closed meeting on Tuesday, and then they have, they're mandated to have a December meeting, so there's a November 30th, December 1st open meeting as well for the State Board.
Is there speculation on the intent of the governor?
The governor wants to oust the Commissioner because he's got his friend that he wants to bring in. He's actually brought that person in on his own fundraising dime to basically let them come see what we've got. And it's been confirmed that he was a fellow, along with this person, in the White House years ago, when they were in college. So he's known this person for years. It's not a new person to him.
The discussion's been about expanding choice, charter schools, vouchers, things of that sort.
And if you looked at Governor Greitens' campaign funds, he had over $300,000 from Nancy DeVos and people who are connected to her, that are supportive of charters, open enrollments, all of those types of things. So he's paying back what he's done.
So a long-term effect, public schools.
Yep.
Any other committee reports? We are on the superintendent's report.
Yeah, a couple of things I'll just reinforce from what Ruth mentioned. I also want to thank our, all of our patrons who participated in the strategic plan feedback process. We had over 750 people either respond by survey or come to the forum, so that's very helpful. And the nice thing is, the things that got the most traction are things that I think we would all easily put our arms around as, as important for our district moving forward. So at our December 14th work session, we'll have the draft of the plan for you to look at in detail that will hopefully capture all that feedback. So we, we've reviewed that feedback with the committee, we've looked at it with the cabinet team, we've looked at it with the admin council, which is the entire administrator team with the district. So we're going to bring back a draft to our committee then, right after the Thanksgiving break, for one more review, and hopefully get that plan put together and finalized. And I'd reiterate also Ruth's comment about what's going on at the state level. I mean, we typically watch the legislative process fairly closely. The State Board, though, has not, you know, we, we watch what they do because of the impacts, they set policy for all school districts, but it hasn't been as political in the past, and now it seems to be migrating that direction, which is a little concerning. And I'll just say, from my personal experience, our current Commissioner's done a great job. You know, she's been in the role now for two years, or being at DESI as a deputy administrator for several years before that. And she's been inclusive, collaborative, really sets high standards, and really is about getting the department to help school districts. There's not, her predecessor was kind of a person that was counterproductive at times in her approach, and, and Dr. Van Deven's been very supportive. So the school administrator groups or, and all the education groups at this point have really seemed to be rallying to support her.
She's had like eight or nine groups come out in support of her, statewide groups.
So I, hopefully, hopefully the process will get us through till January where we can vet the candidates at the Senate level and see what happens then. So with that, then, I would also want to thank everyone who was involved with the STEAM Expo last night. It was quite an event, very, very great showing for our first time to showcase our student talents in all of our different science, technology, engineering, math, arts-type programs. Had over 30 different exhibits there. Patrick Hemmingson, high school chemistry teacher, and Carmen Ricker from our academic services department kind of helped lead the charge there, putting that together. And we had a good crowd for the first time doing something like that. We had all the exhibits scattered around the dome, and Culinary Arts provided treats for everybody, as was mentioned earlier, it was very good. So we really enjoyed that event, and it was, it was a good first start in that, highlighting what our kids can do. And if you didn't get a chance to go, the IB science projects that they demonstrated were unreal. They really did a comp, very complicated projects, and half the stuff I couldn't hardly understand. They were so high-level.
Yeah, one of the titles, I had to have them explain a couple of the words in the title, because it was so in-depth. And on that, on that one particularly, there was two IB chemistry and two IB biology. That was the group that did this. This one young man is taking both IB chemistry and IB biology. Impressive of what our kids were doing that night, and how excited they were when you talked to them.
And there was also a young man that was doing a drawing right there. There were several artists that were doing things that you could watch them do, and just, again, another skill that I have very, I have none. So it was impressive, and I really enjoyed seeing our students and their, their efforts and the support of their teachers. And then the other thing I'll just mention, it's American Education Week, and we've been celebrating that all week. We've taken around treats to all of our staff members and thanked them for all their extra efforts. And I also want to thank our parents for providing their kids to us and giving us the opportunity to work for, work with them to help them be successful. And our, our public education system is, is really amazing, and we have great kids and great staff. So it's a good week to celebrate that, and what's going on at the state level is a good reminder that you have to pay attention to that, or you might lose some of those opportunities. So with that, I'll turn it back to you. Thank you.
All right. Board of Education comments.
To piggyback on the STEAM, you know, it was neat to see parents bring in younger kids and let them see what the high school kids were doing, you know, to, to show them, you know, a glimpse into what some of those things are in STEAM, you know, and how they can connect the dots sometimes of something they like to do, but they didn't necessarily realize it fit into some of those projects. You know, watching all those kids with the robotics and the TSA group, I forgot what this, technology?
Technology?
Yeah.
The Vex Robotics.
Yeah, phenomenal, what they were doing. You know, and the, the Pro Start girls, they were phenomenal going around doing what they were doing.
Guys and girls.
Sorry, the, the students.